Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, May 2nd County Commission Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for coming. Reminder to silence your cellphones, please, and the meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender on the table. If you need a listening device, Carol will be able to help you with that. With that, item number one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes from May 2nd. Commissioner Hyburger?
I would like to make an amendment under the liaison reports, under the report that I gave, the part that says as participation, as part of her participation on the Mental Health Response Oversight Council, it should be on the NACO Justice and Safety Committee instead.
Okay. We have a, do we have a motion for the amendment?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to amend the commission meetings to reflect the NACO Safety and Justice Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three, oh, I have to approve the commission minutes as amended, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended minutes.
That's why we have attorneys, right?
I try to be helpful when I-
You are helpful. We have an amended motion, the motion for the commission minutes which is amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And a second, you're not going to get any, no's. Motion unanimously passes. Item number three, bills to be paid of $430,947.71.
Pay the bills.
Is there a second?
I'm second.
We have one commissioner abstained from the bills to be paid. Any comments, Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, today's bills include somewhere around $200,000 for Tyler Technology, but I wanted to comment that there are also eight bills for $50, which is rebating the money to people who had planning and zoning. When you get planning and zoning issues, we give you a metal sign to put outside the property where the zoning is occurring, and we take a $50 deposit. So when you return your sign after the thing has been adjudicated, we give you your 50 bucks back, and so eight people brought their signs back this time.
Thank you, Jeff. We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Excuse me. Reports, the first report is Minnion County Highway Construction Projects Report. The second is the Minnion Sheriff's Report for April 2017, and those are on file for review. Item five is personnel actions. Consider the motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine personnel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is a special commission action to authorize six additional correctional officers in training positions for the jail, effective immediately.
Good morning.
Mr. Gromer and Carrie.
There you go.
Tag team it.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jeff.
Jeff Gromer, warden over at the jail. I'm just here to request for those six corrections officer positions to be added. That's due to our increasing jail numbers. What we're looking at doing in the jail is adding, converting a indirect post, adding 24 beds and making that into a direct post. With that direct supervision post comes the addition of the staff.
We've all seen the numbers. We're above 400 frequently, and that's not good.
We have been as of late, and I don't foresee that going down. Typically during the summertime, we don't get a reduction in inmates. It's the opposite. We pick up a little bit throughout the summer, and typically what we've been seeing over the last few years is as things rise up during the summer, we're not getting much of a corresponding decrease in the fall and winter months, so.
Thank you for all your hard work and leadership. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the six additional correctional officers. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item six, Olivia?
Yes, we have four applications for abatement. The first two are for assessment freezes for 2016 property taxes, RDID 35326, in the amount of $202.21, and RDID 33624, in the amount of $446.04. And then the other two are also for 2016 property taxes. Hills of Rest Memorial Park, RDID 88527, in the amount of $5,428.82. And the City of Sioux Falls, RDID 38209, in the amount of $658.77.
Any questions? I have just a quick question. Was the Hills of Rest Memorial Park an expansion of their property, or why did we miss that Can you bring back an answer next time?
We can take a look at that, I guess. I'll see if I can answer it if it's all right.
Yeah.
Ms. Woolser, Chair.
Maybe, we might have to ask equalization, but.
I also have a question.
Go ahead.
The next property on the list is for the city of Sioux Falls, and they purchased it on 12/1 of 2016, which is after 11/1. 11/1 is when the, your taxes are assessed, so if, shouldn't that have been figured out at closing then for the taxes due? And I just, you know.
It's a good question.
As far as the Hills of Rest one, I can't tell by the legal description whether it's the original plot or whether it's an expansion, but it was just an issue of that particular legal description parcel that's given in there was qualified for the exemption before and hadn't had it before. There's no reasoning on the, on the application.
Go ahead.
I wonder if we should defer action and wait for an explanation.
Sure.
If there would be any harm, I guess we could ask the state's attorney if there's any harm in waiting a week.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any harm in waiting a week. In fact, maybe we could just direct the questions maybe for your benefit to the equalization office. They would have the best and most accurate information on that off the face of the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve A and B and defer action on C and D.
I'll second that action.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve A and B and defer items C and D to the equalization department for next week. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item seven is a notice and request to authorize the county auditor to publish a construction manager at-risk request for proposals for the Minnion County Jail Expansion Project. Kirsten or Carol, do you have comments about that, or Jean?
I can just comment, and once again, we'd really like to thank Tegra and the leadership team, Kirsten, and actually outside counsel had an opportunity to weigh in on this as well. So I think we've got a really good RFP here for our construction manager at risk. We've had good response to the RFP for the architects and engineers, and I anticipate we'll have good response for this as well. It's a pretty tightly drafted RFP that I think will give us the kind of information that we need to make a really good decision on the construction manager at risk.
Yeah, and I just mentioned additionally too, for the record too, if you recall, you had an item brought before you that you made findings as required by South Dakota statute to use this method of construction management that you found, made the appropriate findings, and pursuant to that, you can issue this RFP at this point. So legal is comfortable with its structure, and I thank everybody for their involvement in this too. It was really a team effort, so.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Is there a motion to publish?
There is.
Second. We have a motion and a second to publish the construction manager at-risk requests for the Minnion County Jail Expansion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There's no planning and zoning notices or petitions for compromise of lien. If anyone has an opportunity for public comment on an item that's not on the agenda, we'd like to hear from them. Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, we're honored today to have one of our state representatives visiting. It's not often, maybe once in a blue moon, that we have one of them here, and I wonder if he might just come to the podium and introduce himself so that those watching at home might see him and maybe say a few words about your sympathies for the county government.
Well, good morning.
I'm Michael Clark. I'm one of the state representatives for District 9, and I want to applaud you for doing the people's work. I mean, at the state level, we pass laws, and it's up to the county commission to put those laws into use. And part of my job is to work with the county commission, and the cities, and have the state all work together. And for that, I would like to thank you, all of you.
Thank you for coming, Michael. We appreciate your attendance.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Jeff, for bringing that up. Any other opportunities for public comment? Item number 10, in regular business, is a briefing from the Sioux Empire Network of Care by Janet Kidham Zalali, President for the Helpline Center, and Stacy Teasen. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Stacy Teasen. I'm the coordinator for the Homeless Advisory Board. The Homeless Advisory Board is a time-tested entity that's been around for a little more than a decade, working relentlessly to effectively impact how we handle our homeless, not handle, that's not even correct, but how we work with our homeless families and our homeless individuals in the community to ensure that we're getting them rehoused and stabilized as quickly as possible. One of the goals of the original 10-year plan was to create a common access portal, fancy terminology for figuring out how to get one way into the system so that we're getting our people rehoused as quickly as possible. The Bishop Dudley Hospitality House has been open about three years. Part of that is that initial no wrong door approach that we were all considering when we were creating that, and that's exactly what a common access portal is. Taking it one step further is a database system, or something known as coordinated assessment, coordinated intake, how we are sharing information with service providers across the community. And while it's new and very much in its infancy, it has shown proven results. It's also a mandate by the federal government for all homeless service providers, something that's supposed to be installed in by January 23rd of 2018 statewide, and of course, across the country. So while it's something we don't know that we can actually take care of by January on a statewide level, we've done, I think, a really good job of trying to get that implemented in Sioux Falls. And with that, I will give you Janet Kidham Zalali from the Helpline Center.
Thanks, Stacy. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I obviously am Janet Kidham Zalali from the Helpline Center, and I just wanted to kind of give you an update on the Sioux Empire Network of Care. And just to make sure we're all on the same page, I'll give you just a little bit of history, a little bit of background. So back in 2014, through the Sioux Falls Tomorrow Visioning Process, it was identified that we had a need in our community for a coordinated social service system, which is a major undertaking. So after that, Sioux Falls Tomorrow was published, there was a small group of us that met on a regular basis for the next year, including Stacy, myself, the United Way, and Community Outreach, to really kind of delve further into that and research it and see if it was possible to build a coordinated social service system. What we found, there were many other communities across the country that had done that very same thing. So we felt it was worthwhile to pursue in our community, so the Helpline Center wrote a grant to the Bush Foundation. We received a community innovation grant in June of 2015 that would allow us to bring together a collaborative of over 20 social service agencies with a facilitated person to lead that discussion on understanding and developing, would this really work in the Sioux Falls community to have a coordinated social service system? And what would that mean? What were the pros and what were the cons? So that large group of 20 social service agencies met for several months, and kind of the outcome of that was, is that they all said, yes, we believe this is worth pursuing to look at a coordinated social service system. We had five agencies that stepped forward and said, hey, we're willing to be part of a pilot project. So moving into 2016, what the Helpline Center did is we have a steering committee of oversight to develop that pilot project, and then we identified those agencies that were willing to step forward. So the method that they wanted to use to coordinate everybody together was a shared software platform. So the Helpline Center, with a lot of help, identified a system that would work for that in 2016, and then we created an MOU, Policies and Procedures, on how the system would work. We onboarded our first agency in September. We onboarded two more in October, and then two more in November. So we learned a lot when we onboarded those social service agencies, and those, the list is in front of you, those agencies that are part of it, but they include St. Francis House, the Center of Hope, Community Outreach, the Helpline Center itself, through the 211 phone number, and Feeding South Dakota, the food pantry. So how the system works is that there is a common intake form that was agreed upon by all of those agencies, and that basic information is gathered from a client when they come into any of those social service agencies. It is inputted into that software, and then it is accessible by all of the partner agencies. A client signs a release of information, allowing that information to be shared back and forth. What is also tracked in that system is the services that each client receives, so it's possible to go in and look and see when they've gone to multiple agencies, which services they have received and which ones they have not, creating sort of a big picture of what each person or individual receives for services. So what we have learned over the past six months has been very interesting. We feel that the pilot project we've had in place so far has been a success. We have onboarded more than 10,000. I know on your sheet it says 6,000, but it's grown quite a bit since I updated this last. So we have 10,000 clients who have been put into the system. And I will say that it has been received very, very positively from a client perspective. I think we've only had just a very few number who have questioned about signing the release of information or having their information shared amongst social service agencies. In fact, the most common comment we get from them is that they believe that that was already happening, because it makes perfect sense that their information will be shared with other agencies. So our goals are to make the services being provided to the client more efficient for them, so they have to tell their story once and not multiple times over and over again. The idea is to make the system more efficient for our social service agencies, and that has been a success, and I want to tell you a little bit about that. The agencies that we have onboarded into the system, none of them had a sophisticated software platform to track their clients and to track the services that were being provided. The software that we use for the Sioux Empire Network of Care allows them to do that. Not only do they have the common intake, the system allows us to build customized intakes and assessments for each organization, above and beyond that common intake. And so at the end of the month, those agencies can look and see exactly how many clients, the demographics of those clients that they've served, and where else those clients have been served at other agencies. We have been able to also improve the communication among agencies. We're working towards, you know, obviously not duplicating services. That is an ultimate goal. And so we're on a very small scale right now, because we only have five agencies, but one example would be, as you all know, we have a bus pass program in our community to provide low-income individuals bus passes, and you can get those at a variety of agencies, and that is one of the services that is tracked in the Sioux Empire Network of Care. Two of our agencies certainly provide those bus passes, and they were able to instantly see that, oh, this client has already received bus passes at this agency, and so we're not going to reissue them again to this client. Thus, making sure those bus passes go to the person who needs them the most, or the individuals who need them the most. That is just very one small example of how we believe on a large scale, this system can really make the social service programs much more efficient. And so that data that we're going to pull from the system for the overall perspective, which is the other goal, is that we, from your perspective, as a funding entity for social service programs in our community, we want to make sure your dollars are spent in the best way possible, and that there isn't that duplication. And we can really track what are our unmet needs in the community, and where should those dollars be best targeted. So we have, with those 10,000 individuals in the system, we have just begun to pull some, some data from that, and I think it's going to be very, very helpful for us, once we have more than five agencies onboard. So where are we going from here? We have the five agencies. The pilot project was funded through the Bush Foundation. That ends in June of this year. The Helpline Center was able to identify some other funding sources to have the project continue through December of 2017. So our goal is to onboard at least three more agencies in 2017 to build that number of nonprofit agencies that are part of the system. And then we are looking to identify funding sources into 2018 that will continue this project and allow us to add even more social service agencies. We estimate that the ongoing costs of the system is about $150,000 every year. A portion of that will actually be paid by the partner agencies that participate. They will be paying user fees for their staff that are part of the system. So that is about $20,000 to $30,000 will be paid by the partner agencies. The rest of the funds, the Helpline Center is stepping forward to identify funding sources to support staffing and the remainder of the software cost, to make sure the project operates efficiently. So I am just out in the community, sharing the, the good word about the work that we're doing with the Network of Care, and just talking about the, the vision for that. And we believe that when we have more agencies onboard, that it will really transform how we provide social services in our community. So I will leave it at that, and if you have questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Janet. Are there questions for Commissioner Karski?
First of all, thank you for what you're doing here. This is a project that, as Stacy said, it's too bad it took legislative action to get it going. It's fortunate to see we're creating a model, and I see where this model could be followed in probably other parts of our community with some other projects that we have ongoing. My question is more, I guess, about the system itself. So do the partner agencies, do they sign a memorandum of agreement or understanding? And are you the, then, the Helpline Center, the one in charge of that? So there is an MOU with you, and all that information can be shared across multiple agencies at that point?
That is absolutely correct. Those agents, those partner agencies, sign an MOU with the Helpline Center. We are the system administrator, and so we maintain the software system and assure that the data that's being entered into the system is accurate and done in a uniform fashion, and that we make sure that those releases of information are signed by those clients and that they're inputted into the system and visible at all times to partner agencies.
I guess, other questions come to mind then is, you know, cybersecurity, and I mean, you're probably dealing with HIPAA and that type of thing, so all those things are in place?
Absolutely. Yes, the cybersecurity is a relatively new concept, but as we delved into this project, we knew that was going to be an issue, and so in fact, the Helpline Center did purchase its own cyber insurance policy that does cover the Helpline Center and the data or information that is shared across those lines.
Okay. And then the last one, you know, with the efficiencies, you talk about the funding for the 150 that's needed, and I would think that the efficiencies gained by all these partner agencies by joining together, you know, would be greater than even $20,000. So I, I hope that everybody can work together and really put their skin in the game, I guess, to make this work, so thank you.
Yes, you bet. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hyburger?
Just a comment. Thank you, Janet, for coming, and I did sit down and talk to him a little bit, and this is a great program. It's pulling data together where we need to have it, and so we can look and see where our, our people are going, which Janet, you've described very well. And I'm hoping that as we move forward with our Triage Center and some of the other things we're doing in the county, that this will be helpful to us, and maybe we can eventually integrate these programs at some degree, because it's basically what we're doing on the county side in a bigger scale. And so hopefully, there's some conversation to be had forward with, with the software that we're using, and, and see how we can move forward with that, too.
Commissioner Bender?
And this is really kind of more of a comment, too, but because you have shared some of this information with the Homeless Advisory Board, and, and I appreciate every time I hear you, I learn new things, but I, I do really want to commend the early adopters. I mean, there was a lot of, you know, while it's, it sounds kind of great and easy when, when it gets presented, there is a lot of hurdles to overcome. All these agencies who are all very thinly staffed and probably mainly underfunded, had to invest staff time to enter all of this information in the system so that it could be in a format that could be shared. And so now that they, we have the benefit of their participation, hopefully that will encourage others to participate and kind of smooth the roadblocks that have caused other people to be hesitant to jump onboard, because it really only is going to work if we get widespread adoption, so.
First?
You know, I was on the Homeless Advisory Board for some time, and I remember Stacy talking about this sort of pie-in-the-sky plan, and, you know, implementation seemed on a, an infinite distance away. And, you know, it's not only going to save the agencies' time, but it's going to save the, the recipients' time, too, because they won't have to fill out that same form when they go from place to place. And, you know, you go here to get food, you go there to get bus transportation, you go here to get medical. People are going to have that information, and it will save them time, and it will save the agencies. And, you know, I hope that as time goes on, that, you know, you can use this data to find other benefits. Clearly, there's going to be people who are just temporarily here, you know, on their way to picking blueberries in Washington State, and they broke down, and, you know, then there's going to be folks that are here only in the summer, and then folks that are here all year round, and, you know, having, it's going to be interesting to see where the data leads us. And so Stacy, I can't see you from here, but thank you, Stacy, and let's make this really work.
Janet, were you surprised at the 10, excuse me, at the 10,000 clients when you projected this?
You know, I, it was surprised a little bit, yes, just because anytime you have a project and you have a dream with it coming together, that it was like, yes, it is possible. We, we know there's that many people out there, and many more, who are accessing social services in our, our community, and so we hope to see that number grow even more, yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for the information.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Stacy, do you have any comments?
No, just thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number 11 is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with the Augustana Research Institute and Sage Consulting for facilitation, report writing, and data collection under the MacArthur Innovation Fund Grant.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Administrative Officer. In the past few weeks, we came to you requesting permission to apply for the MacArthur Innovation Fund Grant. At that time, I think we applied for around $14,000 or $15,000, $16,000, something like that, and you granted us permission to do that, because we wanted to utilize those dollars as we, we work out a concept known as the Triage Center, which you've already mentioned this morning. Along the way, MacArthur came back and said, we're going to give you more than that, we're going to give you $50,000. So that came before you a few weeks ago. Now we're talking about spending that money. And one of the things that we're doing is data collection and taking us through this particular process. So we are looking to conduct a cross-collaborative planning process regarding a community triage center to develop baseline data, combine data, and combine data, and develop an ongoing data plan. To execute these pieces of the work plan for the innovation grant, we are proposing to contract with Sage Consulting for facilitation services and Augustana Research Institute for data and research services. So we are asking for your signature on these particular contracts. The Sage Consulting contract is to facilitate the inter collaborative meetings and to develop and write an implementation plan for the Triage Center based upon the outcome of the meetings and the data supplied from Augustana Research Institute. And the contract with ARI, Augustana Research Institute, is for two years. This will cover the first year of baseline and development and continue on for a second year to evaluate the committee's- year to evaluate the committee's progress or success of any item being implemented. So we would ask for your support on these two particular processes as we continue to move forward.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Carol?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agreement with Augustana Research Institute and Sage Consulting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 12 is the County Commissioner liaison reports. Any liaison reports? Any new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I got a call from a citizen yesterday, and I talked to our highway superintendent about it. He's interested, he lives up by Foundation Park, and he wants to know the status of the county or the township road going north from his property. The city is, is going to pave the road up, up past the place, but then that would be continuing on, on gravel. And I, he's called me three or four times over the last 11 years. And anyway, I'm just bringing that up. And additionally, I would say that, what are we going to do about this clock? It's got the wrong time on it. And it has been for weeks now.
That was at the really top of everybody's list, so I don't think we're there yet, but we'll get it fixed. Trish? Yeah, thank you. See, we already took care of it. Commissioner Bender?
To follow up on Jeff's first comment, the Sioux Falls Development Foundation is going to be making a present, presentation at the Joint City-City Meeting this month on Foundation Park and the status. And so I think that that's, we'll kind of dovetail right into the constituents' concerns there, and we'll be getting some additional information there, and DJ will be attending that meeting as well, so.
Any other liaison reports? That takes care of the new business. Any old business? I had a second call from a gentleman who, and frankly, a lady, who wanted to expand catering services in the county for graduation purposes and, and getting a permit to do that. I think right now we issue six a year, is that right?
I'm assuming to serve alcohol.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Otherwise, she doesn't need one.
No.
Okay.
But would like to see that expanded to at least, well, a, a much higher number. So I know that that's an issue with some people, and frankly, we need to talk to planning and zoning in the Sheriff's Department about the concerns and issues of covering that and who's the lib, going to be liable, all that good stuff. So it's just information at this point. Is there any other old business? If not, we'll go into executive session for personnel contracts and litigation.
It's by motion.
Second.
All those in favor of going into exec session for personnel contracts and litigation say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We need about five minutes to sign documents, and we'll be back.